Yeah.
I think it should be relatively short.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Alasana County Board of County Commissioners, acting in the capacity as four human services. We're going to call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and it is nine, nine fifty-two A.M. Wow, that's a record time here. Commissioner, please, would you please leave us an invitation?
Yes, thank you. Dear Lord, as we move into the fall season and out of summer, please keep in mind of all of our youth and our children attending school, traveling to and from, along with our educators, and get guidance and give them a steady hand they need to assist our youth in order to do. Please keep them safe on homecoming events and dances that will be attended here shortly throughout the season, and we're having a name of great honor.
Commissioner, from the House, please take a religious, please.
Take a religious to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to hold Mr. Carrigan, Commissioner Hess, here. Commissioner Wiespotz, here. Commissioner Kiehl, here. To the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Carrigan?
No, thank you.
Most of the agenda, please. Commissioner Wiespotz, yes. Commissioner Hess, yes. Commissioner Kiehl, yes. Section two, consideration of minutes, two-way regular meeting minutes, July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any questions, comments, or otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Should I approve the regular meetings of July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two?
Second motion. Commissioner Hess, yes. Commissioner Wiespotz, yes. Commissioner Kiehl, yes. To be regular meeting minutes, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Now, comments, questions, discussion, I will entertain a motion.
To approve the regular meeting minutes, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Second motion.
Commissioner Wiespotz, yes. Commissioner Hess, yes. Commissioner Kiehl, yes. Director's report, Mr. Carrigan, and I must tell you, I, uh... This report gave me about six hours of getting pleasure. And I, I think I got through too late, so sir, it's your time.
So, in regards to Director of Department Commissioners, the last couple of meetings, I feel like there's been a lot of concerns at this level, whatever level that I can bring forward, but this month I get to make some progress to deal with. So, let me start off with, the Department of Human Services has been chosen by the state to participate in a pilot program through the Health Care Policy Finance Department. It's focusing on scanning and digitizing the existing case files that we have through some part of accounting, so it's a hundred percent covered by the state. We were chosen out of the sixty-four counties to the HICPU side. And so, we, I've been working with our state liaison at HICPU, and working to identify a company that will be leading this charge to digitize all of the case files to a universal filing system for the state by two thousand twenty-four. And so, right now, the process is for working on a universal indexing system for each of our case files to ensure that we are using that index across the state moving forward, and it will allow us to easier serve our clients if they transfer to another county, or if they relocate out of state, to make sure we get those files out appropriately and timely, and there is a bit delay on that, so we'll be working with the state to get that covered. And then, the C D H S side is in another county, which will be focused on child welfare, adult protective services, and programming that's all in there. And so, we'll be looking at moving to that at some point as well.
And so, going forward, every file that will be electronically from here on?
Correct. So, what we're focused on right now is any client file that's six years or newer, that's what we're required to hold those case files, and this is specifically in our Economic Security Division, which is our tax benefits program. And so, if those case files that are six or new, less than six years or newer, will be part of that process, and we'll get all those digitized and scanned. Right now, we've got probably close to, I want to say, six or seven thousand of case files that we're going to be looking at digitizing. We had it bid out by the same company that we're using for the pilot. The state had chosen them randomly, and that's how they ended up in this, but I believe it was about a sixty-eight thousand dollar cost just to do this round around, and so the state's going to be covering the cost for us on that. Moving forward though, if we continue that contract, then of course we'll look at service fees and along to a contract for that process.
Congratulations, agree with that.
In addition, and Ms. Garrison is out on family reasons, so apologies, but I also wanted to go over, the Division of Economic Security Services will be starting their first annual COVID blanket grant. We serve many populations through the community, we know that there are other agencies that do this, but we primarily see a lot of homeless folks come into our department, and we get a lot of requests for COVID blankets during this time of year going into the winter months. And so, starting October first, anyone in the county that would like to donate a blanket or settle, allow them to drop them off in our lobby, we'll have a collection box there, and then the department or the division will be working on distribution deals as needed throughout the winters.
Mr. Carrigan, a question before I lock up the program, we're wanting to get to the program we have. Is there a requirement for all the departments to be on or before bringing them, and have you checked with the health department since we're still in the COVID protocols and stuff for sure the first time?
No, but the follow-up on that, getting help from the government, it's good for me. We have planned for longer all those anyways, the Division has committed to that. We're also looking at, through their incentive funding that they've earned back, also producing socks and underwear, those can be intended to be some items as well, or if folks would like to donate new socks and underwear to us, that would be helpful as well. I know several years back, I want to say they use incentive funding to purchase clothes brand-new for folks and have them in house, but we aren't looking at donations as well.
How can we help promote this?
Well, we do have press ones in some of this, once we kind of get it finalized, we can have them open until October first, we'll follow up with the health department, obviously, on that piece, but I don't think that will necessarily be a...
I don't think so either, but we need to probably be cautious of this.
Sure. But I think other than that, just spreading the word around town, folks that would like to donate, allow them to drop them off, I know I just did such a convenient, I've got several kids I'll be dropping off as well, but we do, we do have that from time to time when folks come in to get their benefits, their new in the community and their homelessness, so they're asking if you have clothes and blankets. And then, we have a team that does resource libraries as well for community services in that unit, so they also can direct these folks to food or any other services that they may need during that time.
And more so, not, or not so much as COVID-related, transfer home costs if you need assistance, so that may be the issue.
Yeah, we'll cover that. And then, the last piece I have today is in regards to Ms. Nicos Division. The Division of Adult Protection Services is currently working with the State HICPU office as well, and the Health Management Associates Group, H A A. We were awarded some funding, up to ten thousand dollars, to conduct capacity building and change management process training with our staff. Our group is facing some pretty significant changes in the next six to twelve months with the way that HICPU manages our some electric current services and some other expansion services that we're looking at. And so, again, late October, early November, we'll be hosting several capacity building seminars and meetings with community C groups that we work with to kind of get their feedback on specifically what our services, how they're impacted right now, and then with the current changes, what that's going to look like. In late spring, we'll be doing training with our staff and the stakeholders to help with the change management process and get that change a little bit easier to reduce any kind of compatibility with certain...
The Friday, I know that child welfare allocation is going to have the regular meeting, I'm going to be in the department, I was hoping that you would be present. Is there anything present that I may, when we have our Alexine in Denver, conducting the C C A first birthday meeting for our season, and you came on the very same day, if there is anything that you see out there, because I went over the information, I've been going over all the, and I don't really see it between the two flags or this, otherwise?
No, not at this time, I think we're still kind of up in the air, we've got several legislative matters that are to be addressed this session, some of them are repeats from last year to this new added for this, so we're definitely going to be monitoring those to ensure that we don't have any impact, but until we see those actual drafts, it feels like we can just put this in, so at this point, no, I will be intense to see what we can find out. Thank you. And that's all I have for my group.
Questions, commissioners? I think this becomes a conversation that I really like, that's all.
Thank you.
As we do our section four, four eight, consideration, please look out by P G M program.
Yourself, let's read them.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
First, I'm going to go ahead and talk about our adult protection case numbers. For August, we had twenty-four cases. For under referrals, we had twenty referrals. As you can see, we had a significant increase in adult protection referrals for the month of August. Moving to single entry point caseloads, we stayed pretty stable. We had two hundred and forty-eight H C V S E B D cases. We have a hundred and fifty-five H C V S E B D C D S cases. We have thirty-three H C V S E B D long-term home health cases, for a total susceptible of one hundred and thirty-two. We had eighteen H C V S C M H S cases. We have nine C M H S C D S cases. We have two C M H S long-term home health cases, for a sub-total of twenty-nine. We have three long-term home health only cases, for a total case count for Los Angeles and Oregon of four hundred and sixty-four cases. We have seven assessment approvals. We have one initial H C V S approval. We have three long-term home health approvals. We have one H C V S denial, for a total of twelve actions. And one thing that I wanted to talk to you about today is how we handle adult protection referrals. As you know, APS is a state-supervised, county-administered program that has the authority to investigate allegations of mistreatment or abuse of loved exploitation. APS offers protective services to reduce, eliminate, or address any current potential risk of mistreatment or self-niblet of an at-risk adult by using community-paced services and resources, healthcare services, family and friends, whatever program, and many other support systems available to us. APS, of course, will always refer any possible criminal actions to law enforcement and to the DA's office for investigation and prosecution. APS and law enforcement have different definitions of an at-risk adult. For example, law enforcement finds that any adult over age seventy is considered an at-risk adult. For adult protection, our definition of an at-risk adult is more detailed. For example, an at-risk adult is any individual, for us, with eighteen years of age or older, who is susceptible to mistreatment such as abuse of loved or exploitation, and also that adult has to be unable to perform or obtain the services necessary to address the issue of abuse and electroexploitation, where they lack the sufficient understanding or capacity to communicate responsible decisions and take actions against regarding their affairs to prevent or eliminate the accused's electroexplanation. For APS to get involved, we have a process as well as child welfare called RETTEAM. RETEAM stands for review, evaluate, and direct. Whenever a referral comes into this department, unless it's an emergency, if it's an emergency, we automatically go out, especially if it's after hours. But we use this framework and this process, where a group of professionals within the department meet, and usually RETTEAM happens every day upon receipt of child welfare referrals or adult protection referrals, and we sit and we look at, should this report be screened in or screened out? Does it meet our definition of an at-risk adult, and is there a mistreatment? We have to have both for us to be able to go out. And the RETTEAM process is very helpful to us, because it helps us lay out a foundation of how we're going to intervene. Many times in the process, ideas are discussed of what needs to be looked at in the investigation, what information is available to us, what we need to gather, and what is going to be our blueprint for intervention. I just wanted to mention to you a whole bit about this, because many times in the community, everyone feels like, just because there's someone who's older, social services through adult protection will get involved, and unfortunately, that's not always the case. It has to be this criteria, so I just wanted to mention that.
One question I have, is there something? Yes, Laurie, thank you. About a question I have is, what, what are the, or how does it work? Does it matter if legislature determines the law enforcement side of an at-risk adult versus your definition of eighteen years old and older of possibly being an at-risk adult? What, what is the difference of separation and why?
Honestly, I do not know, and their definition might be more specific, because I'm sure it encompasses our individuals that have I D D concerns, but I believe it's just their statute. They have their statutes, and we have ours, because I'm just, that we find.
Thank you.
Sure.
Laurie, thank you so much. I think you mentioned the two eighty-two for public services, and I, doing this, I think you were in there Saturday at the Fort Newton Studios, and I saw that people coming around there to, just from table to table, and exposure and access, it's quite simply a veterans for that people, they have that interest, and your team included that activity together, it's the outreach that's going to make a difference, so thank you, Laurie.
Yeah, I was so appreciative of my staff, they volunteered, and they said, Laurie, you don't need to go, we'll take care of it for you, so that was wonderful of my staff, and that is part of adult protection, is that we have to do five community education events every year, so we're going to count that as one, and of course, we do the childcare, we do our senior care, we try to do some publicity with our mandatory reporters, or maybe we might do some media outreach as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And you guys have the best location in how you attend to this?
Oh, I heard about that, that it was nice and cool, so, and I heard about what happened anyway, so I need to follow up now that I'm over eight-sixteen.
I apologize for not attending, we, we had a show that they missed in three, so we're tied on getting people happy, so.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's a good one.
But Laurie's team, I just wanted to follow up on one of the things, she just held one of our first in three years, one of our local collaborative meetings. It's gathering a lot of agencies that APS has to work with throughout the county, and so it brings them to the table so that we can give them updates. It also allows them to share strategies with their programming services, they helped out at the end yesterday at the community center, it was well-attended, I think probably had about forty folks there, and they had a great discussion. I was a part of that for the first half, and so, you know, again, this team is really doing a lot about reaching the other teams as well, so the D H S and services team, remember, you know, throughout the community, and economic security did a part of that on Saturday as well.
Thank you, Michael, for bringing that up, because at the end of the meeting, it was asked if I could invite one of you to the next meeting, so you will be receiving an invitation. We're looking at Monday, December twelfth, at ten a.m. till eleven-thirty a.m., subject to the schedule, so the invitation will be made.
December?
Twelfth, it's Monday? At ten a.m.
I'll try that.
Okay.
I'm usually working this floor.
Okay.
Send us everything you can, like, we're by the way, we usually play break as well. Yes, it was great, we had, we definitely had more than this, we're starting to be traction after the little bit, but I mean, a lot, yes, we did get a lot of comments out of our placement and the one of their stuff, I guess they can have a baby one in their top. All right, next up, we have Ms. Franklin, which I'll sort of...
Is it have to be there early, because everybody moves now, that's, that's the spot to have?
I think you got the primo location, because we're helping with the marketing next year, so I think.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, for Child Support Unit, I wanted to talk a little bit about establishment. Our establishment for administrative process versus the judicial, obviously, the judicial is going to be for the administrative process, who is the expedited process that we do within our office. All of our technicians do need to be certified through the state department to do administrative process. Our administrative process does need to be completed within ninety days for establishment support, within a hundred and eighty days for establishment of temporary maintenance support. We set our hearing's out at forty-five days. If our service is good, we will hold a hearing within our office, and if we, there are three outcomes, if either party has stipulated order, which all the parties agree and sign, and without letting court, we'll then follow through with it for some of that order. The second one will be a temporary order. If one of the parties do not agree to everything, then we will file a temporary order, where we will enforce only a monthly support obligation, and then we will set a hearing in court for the other issues, or possibly the monthly support obligation as well, if they won't agree to it. The third outcome would be a default order, where the non-custodial party would not appear for the hearing. We would then file a default order in the courts, you have to wait for a judge's signature, and then you would enforce that order.
So, Ms. Franklin, when you go for the administrative process and take the recommendation, has there ever been an appeal in the administrative process going through the judicial step?
We've never had one. The only way that there would be, would be for the default order, so someone didn't show up, and that is why they have a certain period of time to get with the courts and file objections to the default order. But stipulation, basically, they're both agreeing. The temporary, they both appear, and they disagree with something, then we would set a court hearing, so that they can go to court, confront the judge, and they will be able to give testimonies to why they disagreed.
Very good information, thank you. And then, today for child welfare, I know, it's a little bit of standing in, as a parent and supervisor for the commission, so. It's your first one.
I've asked a lot of questions.
I'll try to answer them. Good morning, commissioners. I want to go ahead and start off with our case counts. We didn't have a whole lot of changes, I think, from the last one. So, total number of referrals that we had in August was twenty-four. Total number of children that we serviced in-home is six. Children that are placed out of home, total of twenty-two. Number of children, total served for the month was twenty-eight. Children placed in, out of town is eleven, or, sorry, for that, placed in town, in foster home or kitchen care is eleven. Children placed out of town in foster care is seventeen, and then, children in kitchen care is six.
Well, we have the towns, we do have some, little ones out of state as well, correct?
Out of state, no, not, not anymore. Our, our out of state is, has been closed. Yeah, we, we need to worry to successfully close that.
This, this division has had a lot of success in reaching, I can see in the last few months, we've had several adoptions, and we're coming in a little bit from that.
Right, and so that was what I was going to talk with you about today, is, is our adoptions. And so, and of course, adoption is one of our permanency goals that we, you know, worked towards. And when we get to the point, when we talk about adoption, that means that all other permanency goals have been exhausted, and unfortunately, the kids weren't able to successfully return home. And, and so, it's a long process to get to the, to the point of adoption. We typically have been involved with a case for a year, trying to work towards our rehabilitation. And so, this year, we've actually had quite a few adoptions. We've actually had, since December, we've had about eight adoptions. We currently have, so I have two federal already scheduled for October, and those kids have been in care for a year. One of them, we were waiting on an appeal, so we can move forward with the adoption. We also have two more children that are actually in kinship care, that we are going to start the adoption process and get them adopted. We also have, fortunately, an interpenation hearing scheduled tomorrow, on that basis, on three children, and so, if that is granted, then those children will be adopted eventually.
So, are those siblings, those three, are they?
Yes, they are siblings.
You try to get them to go to the same, same home if possible?
Yes, so the current home that they are in is an adoptive home. We do have a relative home study pending, and so, we would have to look at that and consider that, if that would be appropriate and in the best interest of the children. I do want to let you know that the court is planning an adoption day in November. They have asked me to plan that, that's going to be, I don't have the exact dates, towards the end of November, and so, our goal is, the one, the one home where the two children are in a kinship care, they just agreed yesterday to wait until we have that adoption day in November. And so, that is like a big celebration, you can probably do it in our room, you know, we have people talk, invite our adopted families to come in and, and celebrate, so we're, we're looking forward to doing that, and of course, once I have that date and I start to plan that, I will also invite you guys to attend that. And we will have an adoption today.
I was fortunate to attend one of those meetings, probably five persons, or six persons were my first years as a commissioner, and gentlemen, and I'll tell you, it was very harping to see that, and to see the children, I think at this time, it was, it was an infant, the family members, and how proud they were, and the judge, and the whole team, it's just a really wonderful ceremony, so I'd urge just a few colleagues to, and just for the House Commissioners there, which we're again, our staff, if we can allow them the time off for that short half-hour time frame, I think that would be good. The reason I say that we're still again, and also, Mr. Carrigan, it'll help understand everyone, you guys, what you're supposed to do on the budget side and the financial side, to see all their hard work, that they've worked so difficultly annually, to see that blessing occur, and really, I think would envelop some more teamwork on modeling amongst all of this, so I enjoyed it, and I applaud you.
Adoptions are typically pretty emotional for case workers, because it's a bittersweet moment.
I mean, you're finally reaching that permanency for these children, especially when we've been working with them, you know, for a year or longer. I mean, in some of these cases, I mean, because of the appeal process, it's taking up to two years. I think the one that, the one that we have pending, that we're going to just start doing the adoption and it's going to be finalized in November, we have an appeal pending for over a year. So, and they were in care for a year before that. So, very, very long process. And it does, it is a little bit emotional.
Can I ask one question? The funds that are typically follow these kids up until the adoption, do they also follow these kids in what's a child's adoptive or do the funds?
No. So, kids, so when we're looking at adoption, based on the children's needs and the family's needs, we do offer a subsidy. So, yes, there is a subsidy that typically follows these.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much. It sounds like a regular year in November, the last part of November is going to be Thanksgiving and celebrations. So, thank you for the help and today, I think, this is where the community and security for those families and stuff is making a difference. So, these are the stories that the community sometimes do not hear. And Sarah Morris has mentioned, Ms. Lopez, I cannot think to one hearing or something. But definitely looking forward to having a line again. It is, just hearing that report is incredibly amazing.
Right. And I mean, again, I do encourage you guys to come because one of the children that was recently adopted here in county is a teenager. We don't typically see teenagers being adopted. And my goal is to see if I can get him to speak and talk about his story. I don't know if he will. He's not a public speaker, but I'm going to try so that, or at least, you know, maybe he will talk with you guys individually and tell you, you know, what his, what his story has been.
The reason I asked about the children staying together, my little brother adopted a family of three. So, I think that helps children together and I think that makes the transition look smoother, if they have food better.
Right. Right. And so, that actually is the state's goal is to try and keep siblings together because kids are more successful when they, when they are with family, whether it just be their siblings or in a kinship system. And so, and unfortunately, there's times that we can't do that due to safety reasons. But we do work towards trying to keep children together when we can.
And Chairman, I have one more problem. Ms. Sophie, I just want to say thank you for stepping up as acting in on the render of this program. We appreciate your dedication and understanding.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Please have a good day.
Commissioner, if I could just add, so the adoption case, I know in the past, in this county facility, we also talked about several different areas. There are three areas that child offering focuses on, we can find children with that. In this case, adoption, we also do relative guardianship assistance programming, which is our gap. And this can support that a few possessions back or a week ago back. And the other one is A P R, which is our allocation to mental rights. And so, there, and then, to Ms. Ronkamp's question, financially, there are stipends or fiduciary stipends that go along with those types of programming. So, we do try to support even post that permanency, or we will be to whatever capacity to provide those children with onwards, even in some cases up to age of twenty-one. So, it just depends on the child.
And one last question on that topic, Mr. Harigan. As they reach adulthood, they're old, is there some sort of program or system for higher education for our reserves who would have to be on the higher end side?
Well, we try to, I think in, in our capacity of smaller D H S, like in my case, we'd be tempted if necessary, discussing with you there are programs available. We do try to guide those youth towards those programs as they age out. Normally, we don't really have a lot of interaction with the youth post-permanency piece, depending on the type of programming. And so, we just, we try to educate folks in opportunities as they go out of that. I think in the last almost three years of the Department now, we've had maybe a total of fourteen years that we've worked with in that timeframe that have aged out. And so, we try to make sure they're not halfway to some form of, of not just permanency in their living situation, but also of taking whatever educational resources they have. But again, it's different with the start of the adopt that we can provide and we can guide this with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the case? Again, Ms. Garrison, Al, would you like me to speak to anything on that?
I think there's that one question, Chairman. Not so much on the case counts, but as we're entering budget season, are you able to work with the Department heads on budget? How is that going? Are you interacting with the Department?
Yes, our supervisors have been giving input on their specific programming based on the allocation plotted by the state for permanency. And so, we do have a draft ledger to, miss Paul, at this time, for the first round. Most of them have identified their spending and there were several requests that were made by supervisors before and issued to this coming year as far as the capacity goes. And yes, we are working on that. They'll be holding another leadership meeting to do a ledger review next Friday. As a matter of fact, with the draft ledger being completed.
That's a great question. The process is maintained without that budget remediation for our fiscal year so they know exactly what's in the spending.
Yeah, they're very well aware of where they're at. And when we have to pull back, we pull back. They understand we need to be fine, but we have to pull back in some areas because the realistic aspect is because our financials are settled out essentially a month behind each year or each month, we have to ensure that we have enough to carry us through the year so they, they know that they're watching their spending, they're watching their budgetary levels and ensuring that they're not overspending and we'll be doing it as much as possible.
Commissioner, we have in charge a note to do, and there's kind of a question on that with the recommendation.
Commissioner, the only thing I would like to address with that, I'd like to just give some perspective on, on the falling of workload, but I know we've talked about it in the past. But over this last year, we've seen an additional increase in workload. And I just want to address that we, we know that there is a pending, pending to the P H E. That coming up does mean that we have several folks that are locked into Medicaid right now that are not going to qualify. We are essentially a total of twenty-nine hundred plus folks who fall off of Medicaid and potentially lose their full, a lot many of the benefits coming up. We, as a partner, working with the state for language on how to address that with our clients hopefully. We've asked the state for that, the state has provided us with a toolkit and language on how to address that with clients. And I would just like to put out that if that does improve, we encourage clients to come back and work with our team as we'll try and qualify depending on where they're at so that there's less of an interruption to those services. And I know there are going to be folks that are going to need those benefits or are going to fall off because of the way that it was handled at the state federal level and we don't need them struggling during that time. So, anyone that has questions, they're encouraged to call or call in our customer service line. We have two dedicated agents that are taped to call us, eight to eight hours a day, and they're available for questions at any time.
Well, maybe it might be the perfect tactic. I could see all the commodities and care and share relatively available come January and not be handled from the council headquarters. That might be an option. The funding services looks into that program moving forward or volunteer groups. Are veterans that are assisting now or are not on the network?
And I do know prior to that, they have to make some calls at this time. And that's something the department would entertain. I know that the department handled the commodities prior to taking it over. So, if there's assistance needed from the department to assist in keeping that program involved during that timeframe of transition, please have any money jobs that's really allowed to discuss with us or to do support.
Well, I would recommend you really look into it if you can possibly, especially how the budget started and possibly properly. If that isn't something that you choose to entertain, then you properly get the funding for it. There is a six thousand dollar a year stipend that goes along with it, which is an F Y I. If we leave that because you're on a change or anything, we'll check for all of them.
And that's a good point to make as well. The program is going to be starting at the beginning in October one. Those who have been on the program will also be receiving their notifications, we apply in November one, the general app will open. So, we'll put that out there as well. But I will definitely reach out and call on that case.
Any other questions? I would like to motion to approve a case of your program account. For approval, case of counsel, I'd like to approve my program. Second motion. Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hens?
Yes.
Commissioner Kingsley?
Yes.
And Mr. Harigan, his poetry of all of the financial reports.
When I saw the four hundred and twenty-seven pages, I opened up the packet, I was thinking of the engine block with four twenty-seven. That's the power of the edition.
Try sorting through all that every month, it does it down to the tire.
The audit pretty much is complete.
Correct.
We're going to be having our next interview. And I went through personally through all of your financial commissioners. If you have that opportunity, I'm going to make a recommendation on section five to approve the law's financials. We'll get them all as I consent a data item. I find that's the preference of the board, otherwise we know one by one, and it's your priority, gentlemen.
I have the nonparticular rules to attend to.
Yeah.
Inside, that is right, yes.
We're going to base.
I didn't send agenda.
Oh, as well, I want to read each one individually so we know exactly what's being approved, the dates and the term as of one vote, unless any clarification is required from the director of parent. So, section five, financial because consideration of financials as of May the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Five B, consideration of financials as of May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Five C, consideration of financials as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Five D, consideration of financials as of July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Five E, consideration of bills for April two thousand and twenty-two. In consideration of bills for May two thousand and twenty-two. Consideration of bills for June two thousand and twenty-two. In consideration of bills for July two thousand and twenty-two. Comments, questions, otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Commissioner, we just want to address one thing. Last one, you had a request to start for each month with checks for July.
Yes.
I did speak with our A P. There was a sequencing issue of the audit the prior year and that situation occurred again. And so, that is the reason why those checks were voided, to get it back to the systems appropriately for the audit.
When reading these, you know, reports, I have another engine analogy. If you use the four twenty-seven, I use a little rating. Would you like that, Ken?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda financial report as stated.
Second motion. Commissioner Hens?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Kingsley?
Yes.
And the paper reports, I believe you're going to be speaking on the very last paper of the court?
Yes.
Okay, so, I think in the same perspective, section seven, consideration of paper reports for May day, April twenty-two. Six B, consideration of paper for May day, April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Consideration of paper for May day, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Six B, consideration of paper for May day, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Six E, consideration of paper for June, May day, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Six F, consideration of paper for May day, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And six G, consideration of paper for May day, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Questions, comments, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval of paper from May day, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
To July fifteen, fifteen?
Yes.
July fifteen, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yes.
Second motion. Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hens?
Yes.
Commissioner Kingsley?
Yes.
Item six D, consideration of paper for May day, July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Commissioners, the paper for July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two total was eighty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
I can bring you that answer.
Yes, please. Yes, eighty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Questions, comments? All right, so I will entertain a motion. Will you approve paper of May day, July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, eight thousand years in the line? Second motion. Commissioner Hens?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Kingsley?
Yes.
At this time, we are going to suspend this meeting and go into executive session. Section seven, executive session, if what we mean under executive, in executive session under C R S twenty-four dash six four two, for me, referring to attorney for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions and by primary services and possible lawyer and expansion needs. Motion to go into executive session.
Move to executive session.
Second motion. Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hens?
Yes.
Chairman, are you going to come out and vote on anything?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.